Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda, as always, is the open forum. It's a time set aside for individuals to come in front of the commission for up to three minutes to talk about something that's not on the agenda today. Would anyone like to come forward at this time?
Norm Mantle, West Pelican Hill Road. I'd like to bring an issue up for the commission to discuss sometime. Why is Celine County facing so many litigation problems? What are we doing? It seems like every weekly meeting, the commission goes into executive session with county counselor for legal problems. Are our employees doing something wrong? We need to stop whatever these employees are doing, if they are doing it. I'm not saying they are, but you're costing us... Somebody's costing the county a lot of money.
Okay, thank you very much.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. Before you, I have put a multi-colored copy of the agenda and the kinds of things I have trouble understanding. Last week, Commissioner Chadwick kind of issued a challenge that if the public was having some troubles with the agenda, perhaps we should suggest alternatives. So hopefully you got my email. I've printed out a pretty copy of what I intended the email to look like, and then I have just the issues that are there. For me, you mentioned regular meetings. I wonder when the irregular meetings take place. You mentioned, you know...
Well, that's open for interpretation, I guess.
Yeah, I kind of have a coma answer for what should be.
Yeah.
You talk about, you know, making official decisions here, and yet you made some official decisions this morning. So, you know, there's just some language I struck. There's some things that, you know, it's just one person's suggestion. Put it in the mix. I gave Sue a copy. I've given Rita a copy. You know, it's just an idea, and I don't want to use all my time on that topic, but I didn't know where else... This is my only one chance to really say, you know, here it is, consider and do with it what you will. I also wanted to ask the sheriff and just to follow up on something that came up in a late November meeting. On the jail with the food service management company contract, I just was wondering when you were going out to bid on that again. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the suggestions.
Can I answer that?
Please.
Well, number one, I appreciate people like you, Karen, who are willing to get involved and want to bring things forward, and I would like to offer something to you. This is an application for you to be a volunteer, same kind of sheriff office. I would like you to fill that out, like to sit down and be able to talk to you about that and offer you an opportunity to come inside and help us in areas that we need a lot of help. And I'm not talking about forty hours a week. If you could afford to do four hours a week, you don't have any idea how much that would help us. And if that's something you're willing to consider, take that with you and return. Because I'd like to talk to you about that, okay? Now, as far as our contract with CBM, that's catering by Marlin Company that we deal with, we went out for bid on that in the late part of 2010 and brought them on board in 2011. They are a company right now, I believe, that deals with between twelve and fifteen other sheriff's offices around Kansas. They're well-established now. They're doing a fantastic job. One of the reasons we brought them in, and that's at the time when the county was really having a lot of problems with staffing, and we saw an opportunity to go out and bring a company in that would be responsible for their own employees. And with them, we have two full-time employees and two half-time employees paid by CBM. They come in, they prepare all the meals, they order all the food and everything else. Since we did that contract with them, it was a one-year contract with a stipulation in there that if everybody was satisfied the way they work, it would roll over annually with the Consumer Price Index increase for what it costs them to do business. And that Consumer Price Index priced to us is anywhere between two cents a meal and four cents a meal, depending on what's going on with the Consumer Price Index. This last year that we just signed, it's a four penny increase per meal. They provided this in 2014 with 232,792 meals. We paid $265,026 for that service, which is a dollar fourteen cents a meal or $3.42 a day to feed a prisoner, one cold meal and two warm meals a day. You go to McDonald's, and I checked this morning, you buy the littlest hamburger they have, the smallest fries, and a small drink. Taxes included, it's going to cost you just about $3.26. I think we have a very good program going with this particular company. And you talk about going out for bid all the time. One of the things, and if you do this, you will find out, security is a big issue in a facility like ours, and we have quite a few dollars tied up in doing security checks on the people that work for them that come into our facility. And to continue, to do that every year, it's going to cost money, number one. I can't tell you exactly how much, but it's going to cost money. So, we look at what they do, offer them the opportunity to stay, and they like to stay. And as I said earlier, they have all these other sheriff's offices run. This past summer, this past summer, our head chef in there had a medical problem where he was away for quite a while. Since they have the parties in the state of Kansas that they work with, it didn't affect our operation one bit because they were able to bring in a supervisor from Adeling, Dickerson County Jail, or a supervisor from Rice County, or a supervisor from Ottawa County, and they kept our operation running very, very smooth. So, I have not had a problem with them, and if I did, believe you me, they'd know about it. We would sit down and negotiate it, or we would sit down and go out for a new contract. And right now, they are doing us one heck of a service, and I think it's a very inexpensive service to the county, because I have a piece of privilege. And since we came in with them, we did away with a full-time employee. Her job was to run the kitchen and everything else. Since we did away with that position, we have saved the county through just that one position, $228,128 in four years and one month. That's pretty good. That's a pretty good savings. And the expense of that person, they passed off to CBM, and we're still getting through at a dollar fourteen cents a meal per day. I think we're being very conscious of what we're doing with that fair money, and I don't see anything out there any better. And you talk about, and I know you worked in food service school and you talked about the military, the state of Kansas, I was told this yesterday, that they have been with the same food provider since 1997, and they just renewed their contract, not by going out for a contract, by sitting down and negotiating with them, a new contract, the 2022. Now, that's for the whole state and all the prisoners they deal. Once we get them in, we have to keep them because these are people we can trust, and if I can't trust them, they're gone. I'll hire you to run my kitchen. I'm telling you, they're gone.
You may want to rethink that.
But I hope that answers your question as to why we do things the way we do. It's not just to make it convenient and easy for us, it's to make it the best product for the county. Is that is your question?
Yes, and if we need to put this on a future agenda, I'm happy to do that too, so we can get, you know, the commission, the little background.
I just want to bring you up to speed. I gave this some thought ahead of time. I wasn't sure how Sheriff Kokonowski would respond. My things are, by me doing this, it means the board is not in terror of how I interpret budgets and things like that, because sometimes the way I look at budgets is different than how the board is. It means I might, if I saw problems, refer them to the appropriate regulatory agencies and things like that. And to be honest, I, going in, I don't think I'll see a lot from paperwork and some of that. I just don't think that's where the issues are because it's proprietary, and I had another reason I gave both Rita and the sheriff, but I'm happy to proceed just with those kind of stipulations known that I've given this some thought in advance, and there is a way I'd be willing to do it. So, with that said, thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Glenn, can I get you to cater some of those meals for a dollar fourteen each?
No, this is for the county.
Okay, that's the good answer. Community Corrections has a policy to feed their board members food at their luncheon meeting that can cost up to or more than $150 per. My suggestion is to have them eat the same meals or have the sheriff cater over some meals to Community Corrections, which would save the county money. And they would be eating the same food the prisoners eat and would maybe change their... Not maybe change, but just modify their attitude about some of the things that are going on over there. So, between $1,800 a year or maybe $300, that would be a savings. That's only if we can get the sheriff to agree to cater that over, because it's Community Corrections. That's actually law enforcement, right? So, what do they get to eat? Five to seven dollar meals, and everyone on... Every one of them on the board has a very good job and can afford to buy their own. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Rickstee, 4500 West Schilling. First off, I'd like to thank Karen for asking the question and the sheriff for explaining it. He brought a lot of light to the subject, and a lot of questions have been answered that everybody had in the back of their mind that didn't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And my door is open all the time. Any of you can come in and ask the same question.
I don't want to see your door, but...
That's a good one. All right.
Good answer.
Anybody else today? Thank you, everyone, for the comment. I'll bring it back to the commission, and we'll move to item number one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one is approval of the county commission minutes of January 27th, 2015.
I guess I want to bring to attention that I wasn't here in the afternoon, and we had a five to zero vote. We need to change that to four to zero.
Did you... I'm sorry, I was thinking you came back in.
No, no.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I'll change that to four to zero.
I'll change. I'll do that.
You want us to go ahead and sign this then, or wait till it's...
If it's up, it's... If you'd still move that.
Wait, just make a correction.
I will do that.
Okay.
If you want to make that as part of the motion, Commissioner.
Make it as a motion.
I'd make a motion that we change that to four to zero for the afternoon.
And accept it. And accept it as is.
And accept it as is, yes.
I second that. All right. There is a motion to accept the... Sure.
On the agenda that the county sends out every week to conduct their business, and the information packet includes everything that's on the agenda, I'm curious why that the minutes are not on the agenda posted in the packet. Now, others post minutes in their packets, and I'm wondering why this is not done here.
Those go out the week before. I mean, if you want to duplicate it, we can, but those always go out whenever I get them done, anyway.
I understand that, Don, and I receive those.
But why should they be duplicated? I mean, I guess Sue can put them in there if she wants to, but that's just a duplication of effort, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I've received that packet that you're talking about before in the past, but what I'm talking about, the public needs to be aware, so they can read those minutes too. And they may want to see them also, the ones that are on the agenda.
I believe that everybody gets that agenda, gets the minutes ahead of time. It's a... I'm pretty sure it's the same list. I mean, we can check with Sue on that, but that's up to Sue, I guess.
Even though it's the same list, it should be posted in the agenda.
I'm not understanding what you mean posted. Are you talking about, is it on the internet?
I believe he's saying attached to the packet that they... That Sue sends out. He wants it, if I understand right.
That's right.
Do you get yours mailed or emailed?
Emailed.
Okay, and it's not emailed on there?
Not with this packet, since we changed this format.
Oh, okay.
Well, the format didn't have anything to do... You never posted them before, anyway. So, now you've brought it into the limelight here, it should be posted to the public.
It's up to the county commission. If that's what they want to do, they can have their secretary do that.
Would you consider that, please?
We would consider that, sure. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I didn't even know that they weren't going out, so...
First of all, we need to know if everybody's getting it prior.
Right.
Because if they're not getting it prior, we need to...
Do you get yours by email? Do most people get theirs by email?
I believe there's only one person we mail stuff to, and that's...
Okay.
I'm not sure about Sue's list, but we only mail one set of minutes prior to your approval.
Okay, very good.
The week previous.
I don't see any point of printing it out and sending us in our mail and costing extra weight in paper when we already read it online.
Correct. That's why I had to find out if you're posting it.
If you put it on, if you post it, that's fine, but don't start sending it out to everybody and wasting postage and paper.
All right, thank you for the comment. Appreciate it.
I was going to bring this comment up about the 5-0 vote, but John brought it up first because he was aware of it. And so, I wanted to... That was one reason I brought this up, because if we're not aware of it, we can't comment about it. And like I said, it needs to be prior to the meeting, and I get mine on Thursdays most of the time before the Tuesday meeting. And that's generally added, we've got enough time to review the minutes to just... Because we've attended these meetings in the past, that we kind of know what's going on, and if there's errors, then we can actually fix it before it gets officially approved. And the minutes that Don produces is technically a legal document. I mean, it's, you know, if there's anything goes wrong in a legal setting, they're going to be coming right back to the minutes to use those minutes in a legal setting.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bring it back to the commission. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Item number two.
It's a request for action 115 dash... Or, excuse me, 102-15, reclassification of a deputy higher position to civil process intermittent position. Have Mr. Brent Meander here for presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here today to ask you to reclassify the current deputy higher position to a civil process intermittent position within the sheriff's office. Currently, the deputy higher position's pay rate is $7.25 an hour, and the civil intermittent position is $10.86 an hour. Each one of these positions are allotted 1,000 hours per year to work at the sheriff's office, and neither of them have any kind of benefits other than the pay. If we were to increase from $7.25 to $10.86, that's a potential of increasing $3,610 if all 1,000 hours were used. Both of these positions have the primary responsibility of serving civil papers with inside the city limits of Salina, and the importance of getting these papers out is it helps the court system run smoother, quicker. It alleviates overtime with the sheriff's office and the police department officers showing up. Papers haven't been served yet. They have to go back home for another court date. It also limits the amount of time that deputies and officers that are assigned beats have to come into court and wait around to testify. So, if we can make that process go any quicker and more efficient, I'm all for that. In 2014, there was 13,912 civil papers sent to the sheriff's office for service. As a result of those papers being served, approximately $72,000 was deposited into the general fund. That's quite a bit of money. In 2014, these two positions, we have a deputy higher position and a civil process position, served approximately 38% of all the civil papers that the sheriff's office processes. We have a full-time civil process server, but often he's doing care and treatments, other projects. He served approximately 30%, and then the patrol and operations serve approximately 31%. I would like to increase the job duties of the civil process intermittent position to include doing additional VIN completions, vehicle identifications. In 2014, there was 2,115 VINS that were completed. Approximately $42,000 were transferred to the general funds. VINS take quite a bit of time. Again, we're looking at limiting the amount of time that a deputy on call has to be out of his patrol vehicle, not able to respond to calls. Also like to have them do registered offender checks and tag seizures. Many of these people that they have contact with are victims and witnesses. However, many of these are suspects in criminal cases and have criminal histories, and at times are less than cooperative when trying to serve civil papers. Justification for reclassification, both positions are of value at the sheriff's office. Both positions limit the amount of time needed for a full, on-duty patrol officer to come in, save on overtime, and the employee can't just be anyone. They are given a gun, they drive a county vehicle, and we need to have them have some type of past law enforcement experience. And again, it greatly limits the amount of overtime that is spent by our sheriff's office, and I just think it'd be the right thing to do to increase that one position, move it up to a civil process intermittent position. That's all I have.
All right. Questions from the commission.
Sounds like a pretty dangerous job for $7 an hour.
To be honest with you, I'm surprised that the gentleman that is currently doing that is still doing it for that pay rate. We value him. He knows the area around town, used to work for the post office. He can get those civil papers out pretty quick, and it saves us a lot of time.
But... Go ahead.
He's currently employed then at 725.
Yes, sir.
You're just trying to increase his wage. There's nobody else that's coming on board.
No, sir. That would be... We have two people, two part-time positions. I would just like to get his position up with par with the other one, because they do the same thing, basically. I just think that'd be a good thing to do.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I'll open this up to a public comment.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I know personally that rates have changed for process servers in the last few years to $15 to serve papers, and that's payable to the sheriff. Between paying everyone involved in this situation and the amount of money being received, are you making any money over there?
And we're willing to use some of that money to pay for it.
Okay, well...
Well, I would beg to disagree with that, in that they make money, but they don't make enough money to pay for their expenses. So, you know, what I'm saying is, all that revenue is important, but we do use that revenue to set the budget, so he doesn't make money. He just meets his budget, so just to clarify that.
Well, thank you, Rita. There's nothing left over, is what you're saying.
I always have told the sheriff over the years, when he makes more than he spends, then he's making money.
I want one of those jobs.
Thank you, Ray. Any further public comments?
It's all pretty interesting. Tom Rickstee, 4500 West Schilling. For somebody to do that, put a gun on and go up... Yeah, and I'm wondering, how about the insurance? Suppose somebody beats them up? Are they covered at all with sue insurance, or they just...
They're covered with working income.
Wow, that isn't much. For as much as those guys are doing, yeah, they all need to... That's a pretty important deal, because they have to go out there, and like you say, they're saving the high-dollar deputies and everything, so...
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Further public comment. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA number 102-15, the reclassification of a deputy higher position to a civil process intermittent.
I second that. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business that the commission would like to bring forward at this time?
I guess before the sheriff leaves, there's always a controversy over being over budget, and we know that we're... Have 50 people out of our county that we're having to pay for, and if it was... I know we only pay $30, but by the time we get them there and stuff, it's probably $50. And we need to get that figured out and included in our... The voters didn't vote to build the jail, so we need to get that included in our budget. It makes it look bad for the sheriff department seeing, and either that or get the courts up there to not send so many people to the jail.
Sheriff, if you can get to the microphone, it'd be helpful for the TV audience.
The cost of our contract housing is a line item in our budget, and it is not a line item that is funded nearly enough, because we don't have any idea, really, how many inmates are going to be housed out on a daily basis. That number goes from, anywhere from 15 to 45, and that spread can be in one week, depending on the numbers of people that are arrested and detained. And I agree with you, but if you go out to our website now, you will be able to see on the front of our website, number of beds we have, 192, the number of male inmates we have, the number of female inmates we have, the number housed out, and what it has cost us for contract housing from October of 2011 to today is $1,281,000. And that is right there on the front of our website, and that is a number now that is changing every day, so the people are aware of what's going on. And that's about the only thing we can do. I'd love to put all that money in the budget, Commissioner, but where do we go? We don't know what the actual dollar would be.
Well, I know, but we need to get it where we're not way out of budget every year.
Oh, I agree, 100%.
And the blame is put on you particularly, that you're out of budget, not... And there are, you know, I'm not... I don't know that you're buying radios or things that you don't need.
We're not buying anything we don't need.
So, you know, I just want our budget, if we average 30 or 40 or 50, we need to look at that and get it in our budget for... Because the citizens voted not to build a jail at this time.
And that's something I couldn't agree with you more. That's all I have asked for since 1997, was a realistic budget that we could then work with. since nineteen ninety-seven, was a realistic budget that we could then work with to try to keep within the black. And that's pretty hard when that budget isn't funded adequately.
And if, if, you know, the citizens and, or the commissioners want to put the blame on somebody else.
Hey, my shoulders are wide, Commissioner. I don't mind this. I can explain everything we do, and any citizen wants to talk to me.
But what I'm talking about is, if we want to cut back and get less people in jail, then we need to work in that department and not, that's got nothing to do with, when they bring them to you and say book them, you have to book them.
That's it. That's exactly right.
So, we need to, we need to get an understanding on that, of what the, maybe get our budget straightened out. Because even if we sent them, if we built the jail and hired more people there, it would be more than what, we're not, it's not costing any more money one way or the other.
We're willing to work with you, any way we can.
Okay. I just wanted to, I don't, I don't like reading about that every time I turn around, that you're six hundred, four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars were budgeted.
You think I do?
But, you know, we need to work on how we can cure that, not, that's all I got to say.
You're researching, Sheriff, are you researching the recidivism issue?
That is something, Commissioner, that for two years, this jail committee worked on for two years, and that is all out on our website. And I've talked with the admin captain, and we are going to be making, all five of you, a complete copy of everything that that committee did, and all the programs they looked at, and the recommendations from the consultant that the county paid good money for to come on and lead that thing for two years. And the results of all of that shows what the recidivism things are and the expenses that are going to be involved. It's all in there, and we will provide that to you as soon as he can get everything copied off. Or, you can go out on our webpage, right in the front, it says jail complex project, and it goes in there from the day we started three years ago up until last year. There's a lot of information in there.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come forward at this time? If not, we'll move to announcements. And I would just like to make an announcement that the Board of County Commissioners is seeking citizen board and commission expression of interest forms for existing vacancies on the Salina Economic Development Incentive Council and the Twenty-Eighth Judicial Nominating Commission, needs to be a non-lawyer. So, we would appreciate anybody that wants to come forward. Don, I assume that that's, they can download that form?
Yes, that form's available.
Download that form.
I believe the commission office secretary has those as well.
Very good, very good. Any other announcements? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
If I may, I just want to, to remember Dee Quaid, Dolores Quaid. She worked for the county for many years. Many of you know that she was always with her husband, Eldon Hile, at volunteering at many things in the, here in the city and the county. Her funeral is ongoing at, at this time, and, and I just want to remember Dee and, and Eldon and their, and their friend, family and friends. But she's a wonderful lady and had, had worked hard for the county. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Don, for bringing that.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.